Good evening. Good evening. Today is Thursday, September the 21st, 2023. The time is 6:30 AM. The month of May of this county board of education will now come to the water. Board members, you have before you the agenda. The chair will attend motion to approve PS1, PS2, and PS6 as presented. So moved by Mr. Morton, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded, I saw by the movement hand first. All those in favor approving the motion, please give a five, say a bye.
Bye.
Go the same sign. Mr. President, that concludes the business of personnel services meeting. PS1, PS2, and PS6 will get into the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please be mindful information has been announced to corporate by the package for the 2016, 2021. Capital one, two, three, four, and by three, they are done this Sunday. And by four, another filter of trust that I can keep, if I can on the world to be my king. That's me. Awesome. So just corporate, like, and what we said, I want to do this. Also, I was pretty good side. Special honor, and rest, very nice, all players out.
Bye.
The post is chair nine, five, and we go return at 5:00 to 5:25. And it will be a door for, uh, for our round of four meeting at 6:30. Bye.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Today is Thursday, September the twenty first, two thousand and three. The time is six thirty four P M. The month of meeting of this county Board of Education will now come to work. Uh, boards, you have before you the agenda. Share your ten motions to approve this, your half first. So, motion by Mr. Freeman, second time, I have a vote for early question. Here now, where is the eye?
Eye.
It's both same right. The judge approved half strength. We now move on to the pledge allegiance. We welcome to the podium Kennedy Chanelle Jones, seventh grade student at Central High School. Where is Kennedy? There is Kennedy. Right. Kennedy is the daughter of our executive officer, Mr. Steve Joe. Hold on, Kennedy.
Please ban from the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, united in God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Thank you so much, Kennedy, for leading us in the pledge allegiance. Uh, as a special picture, I want to ask that we were about to hundred and forty. Good brother, she passed the battle of the pageant church, so please come to the podium to lead us in this direction.
Thank you, Lord, as all I pray, to God, we offer full this opportunity to come and present ourselves for the service of students with their cattle. We ask that you would continue to announce this board with your grace and mercy, to your comfort on every side. In God, we ask that you would look faithfully upon our superintendent, Lord, as he continues to lead us to the next trajectory of our destiny. God, you will first of all, be easy in your sight, that God will have a great impact on those who we serve day in and day out. So long this is me, that what we say in the easy in your sight, in the effects of the lives of the students we serve, will be a long lasting effect, that they will become productive members of society. These are the reasons we ask you, if some Jesus may, amen.
Amen. Thank God for all of them. At this time, we now move on to the fourth, the chairman of the chair of the council.
Thank you, boyfriend, Mr. Jackson, good evening, everybody. Each month is my honor to present highlights happening within our schools and districts. Tonight, I am excited tonight. Tonight, I'm excited to share some of my highlights from the past month. First of all, check out these days what we got sitting. Oh, thank you to I C D Construction, construction, and Hill Scrab for the beautiful days and the doors to renovate P L C one, who remembers the canary yellow P L C one. Yes, beautiful. Now, I C D Construction currently working on the new spring project, donated materials, donated materials and instruction of this platform for me. Let's give it a round of applause. Thank you to Westside High School's visual arts department for the artwork featured this month for board meeting. The artwork featured in the room will be available for me at the auction to be held soon. All artwork is part of an art show named School Pride. This captivating exhibition embodies the essence of school pride showcasing a diverse collection of artworks that capture Westside's heritage and spirit. Teacher Lady Clemente Cherry, and I quote, "From stunning additions of our iconic school building to the revered symbols like the Go-Go's emblem, the Seminoles spirit and the Seminole, these creations resonate with the heart and soul of Westside." We invite you to immerse yourself in the vibrant tapestry of our school's identity through the eyes of our talented student artists, united by their passion and dedication to celebrating what it means to be a part of the hashtag building for the community. And I do believe I saw Principal Chip Horton, is he still here? Thank you so much, Principal Horton, for allowing your students to be showcased tonight. Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you to Westside High School for kicking off Hispanic Heritage Month, which is recognized nationally from September fifteenth to October fifteen, the performances by Hispanic Linguico Ballet, our arts today is something for our students and staff to enjoy. I must also say, nosotros sentimos ordenados de tocarlos con tiempo este festival de ser y las contribuciones de la comunidad hispana. Abajo nuestros espinatas y familias hispanas y abusamos la oportunidad de la mente más sobre la herencia hispana. You know what I said, right? If you don't, I just simply say, we are honored to take time this month to recognize the contributions of the Hispanic community. We love our Hispanic students and families and appreciate the opportunity to learn more about the Hispanic heritage. Employee appreciation. September fifth, the celebrations in our schools are helping to show that appreciation for attendance awareness month, payroll appreciation week, National Grandparents' Day, National Arts and Education Week, National Hispanic Heritage Month, Constitution Day, National I T Professional Day, Educational Technology Day, Finance and Accounting Appreciation Week, and Human Resources Professional Day, and thank you to all our boys and grandparents for your support. And if you want to thank for yourself, trust me, it's coming. Last Friday, community members got the chance to see the new renovations surrounding Heritage Thompson Stadium in action as Northeast High School hosted the Academy for Classical Education in the reading two A opener, two double A opener. It was a great pride for the Raiders fifty-two to twenty-six win, and it will be exciting to see how these accommodations continue to improve the management experience in our events. Thank you again to Sherri construction for overseeing this work. Great things are happening in the classroom as teachers implement new math standards. Recently, students in Miss Cortez's second grade class and Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Middle School spent time dominating doubles and doubles thus worn. The campus police grade number reading program is underway for the school year, and if anybody sees cheap buildings, ask me to come in for a minute, please. Officer Angelo Bellamy met recently with new firsts and second grades at Army Middle School and top field of the middle school, and found the students excited and very eager to learn. This V C S D Campus Police Initiative of playing a role in helping students reach their literacy goals while building positive relationships between students and S R O's, school resource officers, that is, was also featured in the latest issue of Police Magazine for the two thousand twenty-three Innovative Police Leagues. Is it here? Okay, I was going to announce this was the last board meeting after thirty-three and a half years of our chief of police, Ronald Russell. And let's give him a round of applause, two times. He showed the attitude and appreciation of all of his service. Earlier this week, the Megan Bill managed literacy lights announced September as a goal education and family literacy month. This was part of the group's annual bunching. Thank you to leaders from across the community who are focusing on this. Students at the families gathered in the middle school this past Saturday for the school's first agricultural family birthday of the school. Led by agricultural teacher Jennifer Wilson, volunteered work on establishing new raised beds and assembling the school's chicken enclosure. Eggs are coming. The Greater Megan Chapel Congress is part of the bid between schools to provide students in grade six to twelve with valuable career resources designed to empower students to plan for their future careers by innovating the economy. One of these resources is a bi-monthly livestream called Future Workforce Friday. During the livestream, students hear from dynamic businesses, employees, educators, and other industry professionals sharing insights about the importance of career pathways and local opportunities. The program seeks to introduce students to various career pathways available locally, promoting Central Georgia as an excellent place for young talent to thrive. The next Future Workforce Friday is scheduled for tomorrow at ten fifteen A M. This week's conversation will highlight careers in cybersecurity. The One Nathan Business Education Partnership or B E B met earlier this month for the first time this school year at Hutchings College and Career Academy. This is an open invitation for the business community to be at the table of collaboration with the Big Brother School District. Save the date for February seventh and join B E B for the next meeting. The Big Brother School District was honored to host Leadership Making Class in two thousand and twenty-three, this month as classmates learned about public education in our community. Classmates visited schools to the Westside and Ruppell Zone where students led tours and asked questions. To wrap up the conversation, classmates participated in a panel with educational leaders from throughout the district for a candid conversation about the impacts of resources and support on public education in local communities. Northeast High School's Kayla Williams has been named as a two thousand twenty-four National Merit Scholarship Program semi-final. This is, Kayla is the only big student recognized for this prestigious honor this school year. She is also the recipient of the U S Department of Education States, the Department of State's Congress, Butterstagg Youth Exchange High School Scholarship, and studying abroad in Germany this school year. Wow. Eighteen schools trade as integral play sixty-fifty gram project schools, with representatives from the Cooper Institute included Bruce Hotley, Heritage Lewis, Vineville, Williams, Apple, Miller, Power Mill, Mount Hudson, Rocklin Mill, Bieber, Central Northeast, Howard High, Southwest High, Rocklin High, and Westside. V I P Academy of Douglas Hutchings College and Career Academy graduate and flex student entrepreneur, Makayla Whitehead, who earned a second place finish in the Georgia Foundational Leadership and Entrepreneurial Experience, also on his flex, competition with her self-care business, Britney, B U D, will celebrate the ribbon cut of a new business. And the location is four eighty-four Bullberry Street at that ribbon cut this Friday, October the sixth at eleven o'clock A M. Also, this is your reminder that culinary arts students prepare meal kits each week at W S Hutchings College and Career Academy. Purchase your meal kit by visiting W W W dot compassroadscafe dot com. The Big Brother School District is excited to celebrate the construction of a new building with the spread of the elementary school community this Friday. This new school is possible thanks to the East Drive that has our education special purpose local option sales tax, a one percent sales tax approved by the voters in two thousand nineteen. Work is well underway and rolling for opening next school year. In other horizons, the Big Brother School District is excited to announce the B four B Parent Session Student Success Expose. The purpose of these events is to engage, empower, and support families in being successful with every student's academic performance. These events will be held in the communities of each of the six school zones. It will have food, games, prizes, and giveaways. Big Brother members are invited to receive academic information and resources supporting the whole child and family. Each expose from five to seven P M. So join us at one for six following locations. For the central zone, September twenty-sixth at Tackle Square Park. Westside Zone, September twenty-eighth at Little Georgia State University. Southwest Zone, October third at Bryan Johnson Center. Northeast Zone, October fifth at Rosa Jackson Recreation Center. Howard Zone, October twenty-fifth at Therry Nesteries Community Center. And the Rocklin Zone, October twenty-sixth, top field Recreation Center. That concludes all of my report and will now be emissions and sand pitches. Our race will lead the way.